We'll call this council meeting to order on October the 28th at 7:00 PM. We will ask Associate Minister from Northside Church of Christ to come forward and lead us in the invocation, and after that, Mr. Ham will lead us in the Pledge of the Legion, so please rise.
Our Father, we thank you so much for letting us know you, that you're part of our lives. We're thankful that in this community, that you are a part of the daily life of its citizens. We ask a blessing tonight on the council, that their work will honor you as it honors its citizens. We ask for peace. We know you're the God of peace. You're the one that can provide that. We pray for peace in the room. We know that in a democracy, there are many points of view, sometimes divergent. We pray for understanding. For the council members, we ask a blessing, that they may be wise tonight and always. Help them to do what is the best thing for the citizens of this city. We pray also that it will honor you. We understand from your word that to serve in this way is a reflection of who you are. So I ask a blessing on each of these people who have been elected from our number, that they will do their best tonight. Help them to listen carefully. Help those who present to present their words in a kind and clear and concise way, that all may be understood. We do thank you for the nation in which we live. We thank you for the form of government that values the participation of each citizen. And so, we want to say thank you. Help us to take advantage of that in a good way, a way that honors you. In the name of your Son, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The Pledge of the Legion. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would, please call roll.
Frank Baptist.
Here.
Steve Brown.
Here.
Joshua Lynn Cash.
Here.
Evelyn Reed.
Here.
Bill Donner.
Here.
Jeff Morrow.
Here.
Judd Hart.
Here.
James Hertzfield.
Here.
Steve Lee.
Here.
Jeff Ham.
Here.
We have 10 present.
10 present, alright. You have the minutes before you. I know that each of you have read them so far, and had an opportunity to look through them. Do we have a motion on minutes from last month?
Motion to accept.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second to accept minutes? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Alright, motion passed. Alright, this time we'll have our service awards.
Linda Krusher was born in Malvern, Arkansas, moved to Wisconsin as a child where she graduated from Germantown High School. Linda moved back to Arkansas 15 years ago in 2004, and became part of the Benton Fire Department as administrative support in October of the same year. She has been married to Gerald Krusher, a retired police officer, for 27 years. Linda is an avid country music fan, and was once the national membership coordinator for the Loretta Lynn Fan Club. Linda also enjoys photography and going to the beach as much as possible.
Captain Jay Chitwood began his career with the Benton Fire Department 25 years ago on October the 18th, 1994. He worked his way up through the ranks from firefighter to his current rank of captain. Captain Chitwood graduated from Bryant High School, and is engaged to Missy McNew. Jay is the father of Jay Lynn, a nurse at St. Vincent's Hospital, who is also married to a Benton firefighter, Drew. A US Coast Guard's... Drew, a US Coast Guard stationed in Clearwater, Florida, and he is grandfather to Blake Lynn. Jay enjoys fishing and hunting.
Next, would you please read the Friends of the Library proclamation?
Whereas in March of 2017, a group of local dedicated volunteers started the Friends of the Library Group for the Saline County Library. And whereas since its inception, the Friends of the Library Group has opened a used bookstore, and implemented a program to deliver books to local organizations such as jails, nonprofit organizations, and schools. And whereas Friends of the Library Groups across the state are dedicated to the sport of libraries, this institution is essential to democracy and lifelong learning. And whereas Friends groups advocate for funding that will provide libraries with the necessary print and electronic materials, expert assistance in research, technology, equipment, and services for all ages, from the very young to the senior citizen. And whereas Friends groups promote the joys and benefits of literacy, learning, and economic well-being for people of all ages by investing time and effort, and raising supplementary funds to enhance library resources and programming. And whereas the gifts of time and commitment by libraries, by Friends of the Library of Saline County set a positive example of civic engagement that benefits both volunteers and their communities. Now therefore, Tom Farmer, acting under his authority as Mayor of the City of Benton, does hereby proclaim the week of October the 20th through 26th as Friends of the Libraries' Week.
I want to just say that we have an outstanding library. Our Saline County Library is probably one of the best in the state. So if you hadn't had an opportunity to visit, you need to do so. I think you'll be just as amazed as I was when I got to go through and take a tour and see everything that it has to offer, because it offers more than books. It offers a lot of programs for children and adults. It just offers a little bit of everything of life. So if you get a chance, it's a fascinating thing. Alright, and this time we're going to the agenda meeting and back... I mean, during the agenda meeting, we had a motion to amend the agenda, to move Public Utilities Commission to the front. It was seconded, and so at this time, entertain a motion.
Make motion to remove item 6 up to item 1.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, at this time, Mr. Hertzfield?
Yes. I'd like to ask for the first reading of ordinance 80, 2019, to be read by title only.
Alderman, if you would, state the motion that you're moving to suspend the rules, and read by title only on first reading.
Alright, then we're gonna suspend the rules, so if we can read it by title only.
Is that a motion?
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Would you take roll, please?
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Steve Brown?
Yes.
Joshua Lynn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, please read it.
Bill Donner?
By title only.
Yes.
Alright, please read it. By title only.
Thank you. Now we need a motion to have the first reading, do we not?
Have they made the motion? Yes.
Do we have a motion for the first reading?
No.
Yes.
Yeah, second.
No, that was suspended.
That suspended the ruling.
We have a motion and a second.
You need to make a motion now to suspend or to read it.
Mr. Hertzfield made the motion, Mr. Lee seconded. By title only.
Motion for the first reading of ordinance number 80.
Second. When they make the motion, they need the second reading.
80.
Ordinance number 80 of 2019, ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of public utility refunding
Second.
By title only. We have a motion and a second to have a second reading by title only.
Ordinance number 80 of 2019, ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of public revenue bonds to refund outstanding bonds providing for the payment of the principal of and interest on the bonds prescribed in other matters relating thereto and declaring emergency.
Alright, do we have any comments from the public?
utility refunding revenue bonds to refund outstanding bonds providing for the payment of the principal of and interest on the bonds prescribed in other matters relating thereto
Comments from the council?
and declaring emergency.
Alright, do we have any comments from the public? If none?
Well, actually, council member, I've conferred with bond council, and they want us
Comments from the council? If none?
Well, actually, council member, I've conferred with bond council, and they want us
to suspend the rules for each reading. So if you would, make another motion to suspend the rules for the second reading by title, to be read by title only.
to suspend the rules for each reading.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion to suspend the rule by second reading by title only.
So if you would, make another motion to suspend the rules for the second reading by title, to be read by title only.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion to suspend the rule by second reading by title only. We have a second?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
We have a second?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Jeff Ham? Yes, sir.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow? Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Yes.
Judd Hart? Steve Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
James Hertzfield? Joshua Lynn Cash?
Yes.
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Steve Brown?
Yes.
Joshua Lynn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Steve Brown?
Yes.
Joshua Lynn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
Now emergency clause.
Now a motion for...
Do you have a motion for the emergency clause?
No, adopt.
Adopt.
Adopt on the third, for the third.
We just suspended the rules, now we need a motion to read it for the third time.
We have a motion to have the third reading by title only. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second, so please read it by title only.
Ordinance number 80 of 2019, ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of public utility refunding revenue bonds to refund outstanding bonds providing for the payment of the principal of and interest on the bonds prescribed in other matters relating thereto and declaring emergency.
Alright, any comments from the public? From the council?
Mayor?
Yes.
This does save the taxpayers about $1.1 million, not that it's been said out publicly here, but it was said earlier, but it is a very good cost savings for the citizens of our community.
Alright, any other comments?
Take the roll.
Take the roll.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Steve Brown?
Yes.
Joshua Lynn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Steve Brown?
Yes.
Joshua Lynn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Steve Brown?
Yes.
Joshua Lynn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Now a motion for...
Do you have a motion for the emergency clause?
No, adopt.
Adopt.
Adopt on the third, for the third.
We just suspended the rules, now we need a motion to read it for the third time.
We have a motion to have the third reading by title only. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second, so please read it by title only.
Ordinance number 80 of 2019, ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of public utility refunding revenue bonds to refund outstanding bonds providing for the payment of the principal of and interest on the bonds prescribed in other matters relating thereto and declaring emergency.
Alright, any comments from the public? From the council?
Mayor?
Yes.
This does save the taxpayers about $1.1 million, not that it's been said out publicly here, but it was said earlier, but it is a very good cost savings for the citizens of our community.
Alright, any other comments?
Take the roll.
Take the roll.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Steve Brown?
Yes.
Joshua Lynn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Steve Brown?
Yes.
Joshua Lynn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Steve Brown?
Yes.
Joshua Lynn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Steve Brown?
Yes.
Joshua Lynn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Steve Brown?
Yes.
Joshua Lynn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Steve Brown?
Yes.
Joshua Lynn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance number 75 of 2019.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for the second, third reading, ordinance number 75 of 2019.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Steve Brown?
Yes.
Joshua Lynn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Steve Brown?
Yes.
Joshua Lynn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Steve Brown?
Yes.
Joshua Lynn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Steve Brown?
Yes.
Joshua Lynn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
I make a motion to pass the emergency clause.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass the emergency clause. Please take a vote.
Steve Brown?
Yes.
Joshua Lynn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
I make a motion to pass the emergency clause.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass the emergency clause. Please take a vote.
Steve Brown?
Yes.
Joshua Lynn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Steve Brown?
Yes.
Joshua Lynn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Steve Brown?
Yes.
Joshua Lynn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Steve Brown?
Yes.
Joshua Lynn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
It's on page two. Two thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars.
And then eight hundred and seventy.
All right. Any other questions? All right.
I make a motion to suspend the rules for the second and third readings of ordinance number seventy-six of two thousand nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for the second reading of ordinance number seventy-six of two thousand nineteen.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Jed Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance number seventy-six of two thousand nineteen on the second and third readings by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance seventy-six on the second, third reading by title only.
Ordinance number seventy-six of two thousand nineteen, ordinance amending the two thousand nineteen budget for the general fund and the Parks Fund is adopting an ordinance one of two thousand nineteen, accepting sale proceeds for the old cell phones and iPads declaring emergency and for other purposes.
All right, any comments from the public? Comments from the council? Please take a vote.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Jed Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Councilmember Cash, anything else?
I make a motion to pass, I'm sorry, to pass the emergency clause.
We have a motion and a second to pass the emergency clause of ordinance number seventy-six of two thousand nineteen. Please take a vote.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Jed Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
All right, ordinance number seventy-six, two thousand nineteen has duly passed. Councilmember Cash, do you have anything else?
No, that is all. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, community service, councilmember Reed.
Yes, sir, a motion, excuse me, to have a first reading of ordinance seventy-seven of two thousand nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the first reading of ordinance number seventy-seven of two thousand nineteen. Please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number seventy-seven of two thousand nineteen, ordinance providing for conditional use for hair salon at thirteen thirteen Alcoa Road declaring emergency and for other purposes. Whereas an application for conditional use permit was filed with the planning commission of the city of Benton, Arkansas by Pamela Tolson requesting that the property at thirteen thirteen Alcoa Road with the parcel number there be issued a conditional use permit for the operation of a hair salon in an R-two zone. And whereas the planning commission ordered a public hearing to be held on the eighth day of October two thousand nineteen at six o'clock PM for the purpose of hearing said application, that no such hearing having been published in a newspaper, having a bona fide circulation in Slay County, Arkansas with evidence having been submitted that all property owners will seize within three hundred feet of the property. Hearing after described having either consented to or been notified of said hearing, at said hearing, the planning commission resolved to recommend to the city council of the city of Benton that the application for conditional use permit be granted. And whereas the city council of the city of Benton desires to grant a conditional use permit to Pamela Tolson for the operation of a hair salon in R-two zone at the above location now therefore be ordained by the city council of the city of Benton, Arkansas. Section one, Pamela Tolson is hereby granted a conditional use permit for the operation of a hair salon at the following location, thirteen thirteen Alcoa Road, Benton, Arkansas, with the parcel number there. Section two is hereby found and determined there is immediate need to authorize the conditional use of the property to allow for this continued operation of a local business. Therefore, an emergency exists and this ordinance is necessary for the preservation of public peace, health, and safety. It shall be in full force and effective me from and after its passage in approval.
All right, do we have any comments from the public? Yes, ma'am, you're welcome to come to the mic, state your name and...
I didn't know I had to speak. I'm Pamela Tolson. I am, I think as owner of the thirteen thirteen Alcoa. The situation came about when I took the property over. That has been an existing salon in the city of Benton for fifty years. I don't know if y'all know where that was. It has always been a salon. Utilities were on. I had a pause from the city regarding this salon that is actually still standing as a salon, unable to open this salon. So I have went through all of the motions to try to get this salon up and running, which is still sitting there non-running, and I've asked, I'm asking the council to approve that. It actually, in my understanding, is, it should have been a non-conforming grandfather use because it has always been a standing salon. So I think that's kind of where I was at, is asking the council to approve that so we can get it covered.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Comments from the council or questions from the council?
Motion to suspend the rules for the second and third reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for the second and third reading.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Jed Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Motion to adopt ordinance seventy-seven on the second and third reading by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number seventy-seven on the second, third reading by title only.
Ordinance number seventy-seven of two thousand nineteen, an ordinance providing for conditional use for a hair salon at thirteen thirteen Alcoa Road declaring emergency and for other purposes.
All right, any other comments from the public? Comments from the council? Hearing none, please take a vote.
Jed Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Motion to adopt the emergency clause.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the emergency clause. Please take a vote.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Jed Hart.
Yes.
All right, ordinance number seventy-seven of two thousand nineteen has duly passed. Councilmember Reed, do you have anything else?
Yes, sir, at this time, I make a motion for ord, uh, first reading of ordinance seventy-eight of two thousand nineteen.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the first reading of ordinance number seventy-eight of two thousand nineteen.
Ordinance number seventy-eight of two thousand nineteen, ordinance providing for conditional use for a licensed in-home daycare at twenty-four fourteen Red Bud declaring emergency and for other purposes. Whereas an application for conditional use permit was filed with the planning commission of the city of Benton, Arkansas, Shannon Knuckles requesting that the property at twenty-four fourteen Red Bud Cove with the parcel number there be issued a conditional use permit for the operation of a license in-home daycare in an R-two zone. And whereas the planning commission ordered a public hearing to be held on the eighth day of October two thousand nineteen at six o'clock PM for the purpose of hearing said application, that notices said hearing having been published in a newspaper, having a bona fide circulation in Slay County, Arkansas, evidence having been submitted that all property owners will seize within three hundred feet of the property. Hearing after described having neither consented to or been notified of said hearing, at said hearing, the planning commission resolved to deny the application for conditional use permit. And whereas following the denial by the planning commission, Shannon Knuckles timely appealed the decision to the city council. And whereas the city council of the city of Benton desires to overturn the denial by the planning commission and grant a conditional use permit to Shannon Knuckles for the operations of a licensed in-home daycare in an R-two zone at the above location now therefore be ordained by the city council of the city of Benton, Arkansas. Section one, the decision of the planning commission denying the conditional use permit is hereby overturned. Shannon Knuckles is hereby granted a conditional use permit for the operations of a licensed in-home daycare at the following location, twenty-four fourteen Red Bud Cove, Benton, Arkansas with the parcel number. Section two is hereby found and determined there is immediate need to authorize the conditional use of the property to allow for the continued operation of a local business. Therefore, emergency exists and this ordinance is necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, and safety. It shall be in full force and effective me from and after its passage in approval.
All right, do we have any comments from the public? Yes, ma'am. You may come up here and, yes, ma'am, state your name and... Sure.
I'm Shannon Knuckles and I own a preschool in the center of Oxford. I have been a teacher for twenty years and have a child, a master's education, Oxford diploma. And I'm a college student, I'm a teacher and I'm a model for schools and also the principal. So I decided to open a school. I'm sorry, a lot of people. I decided to open a school and I wanted to be able to support my children but also make these guys go to my town. I needed to find a place. I started my home and I went to the city and they're very helpful. And I was also licensed for a registered voluntary home for five children. Later on, I had a student whose mother had her, her mother had adopted two children. And they came from a very poor situation and she adopted them. And they came to me and I had seen the progress that their grandson had made in my care and she really wanted her adopted children to come. So I approached the city and they were helpful and said to contact DHS. And DHS came out and gave me approval, actually gave me approval for up to ten children. And I just added on two more and informed the city that I had been approved. The children were with me a month. DHS called and everyone's attention that I was going to just get a conditional use permit in order to meet the requirements of Benton. So I went to planning and they were very helpful and helped me through the application process. And I went to counsel and it was denied. And so when I counseled those, it was denied. The mother and all my family's were here that night. Sorry.
It's okay.
She got me in the foyer and she was crying. Sorry. She wanted to know what I meant for kids. And so I'm a mom too. And my kids are grown, but there was a time I had to be there. And when you find a person that can, the kids want to go to them in the morning and they're not only happy to go, but you know that value is being added into their lives, it's a treasure. And so also these children had been in a lot of rejection and just from their past. And this is, this would cause emotional disturbance to them, to have to be removed from the home. So what I'm asking is, we have purchased some, or we're in the process of closing lots of property and on December sixth, there's a home there. And I just need some time to get that place licensed and I could move my, move over there and get that license and hold more children. And I was asking for a period of time to the end of January to let me keep the boys in my home and not, and not having to go elsewhere. And then we would just move into the new facility at that time. That's what my request to the council is.
All right, thank you. Now, these are siblings of a child you already have, is that correct?
Well, actually they're uncles. He, it's the, the, the little boy.
Yes.
His mother's, his mother's mother that adopted these two boys.
Okay. That's what I thought. All right, council, do you have any questions or any comments at this time?
I'd just like to say thank you for what you do.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I went over to the daycare unannounced. I just called her and said, how'd I get to your place? Because I drove by and there's no signage or, you know, fits, there's nothing. You can't tell it's a daycare. It's on the cul-de-sac. So traffic is not an issue. And inside her daycare, you could eat off the floor. It's as that clean and neat. So I'm, I'm going to support her in, in her endeavor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I'm going to thank you because my wife ran a daycare in our house for years. So I know exactly what you go through on a daily basis, so thank you. So, all right, any other comments? All right. Thank y'all.
Make a motion to suspend the rules for the second and third reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for the second and third reading. Please take a vote.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Jeff, that's, Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Jed Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Motion to adopt ordinance seventy-eight on the second and third reading by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number seventy-eight on the second and third reading by title only.
Ordinance number seventy-eight of two thousand nineteen, ordinance providing for conditional use for a licensed in-home daycare at twenty-four fourteen Red Bud declaring emergency and for other purposes.
All right, any comments from the public? From the council? If not, please take a vote.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Jed Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
All right, councilmember Reed.
Motion to adopt the emergency clause.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the emergency clause. Please take a vote.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Jed Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
All right, ordinance number seventy-eight of two thousand nineteen has duly passed. Congratulations. Yes, ma'am. All right, anything else, councilmember Reed?
Uh, community service committee will meet November the fifth at six PM.
November the fifth at six PM?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, councilmember Hamm, do you have anything from street drainage for us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask for the vote on resolution number seventy-three of two thousand nineteen.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for resolution number seventy-three of two thousand nineteen.
Resolution seventy-three of two thousand nineteen, a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a contract with Burke Halter Technologies, Inc. for constructing certain drainage improvements in the area of Princeton and Montclair Streets and for other purposes. Whereas the city of Benton published a request for bids for the construction of certain drainage improvements in the area of Princeton and Montclair Streets. And whereas after review of the bids, it has been determined that the contract should be awarded to Burke Halter Technologies, Inc., which is the lowest acceptable bid. And whereas the city wishes to enter into an agreement with Burke Halter Technologies, Inc. to construct certain drainage improvements in the area of Princeton and Montclair Streets for the sum of one million seven hundred thirty-four thousand six hundred eighty-three dollars plus a contingent amount of one hundred and three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for the construction of a gravity block wall. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Benton, Arkansas, section one. Mayor and city clerk hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the city of Benton a contract with Burke Halter Technologies, Inc. to construct certain drainage improvements in the area of Princeton and, and Montclair Streets and to pay the agreed-upon compensation when due.
All right, do we have any comments from the public? Comments from the council? Hearing none, please take a vote.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Jed Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
All right, resolution number seventy-three of two thousand nineteen has duly passed. Councilmember Hamm, do you have anything else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, resolution, I have a motion for resolution number seventy-four of two thousand nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for resolution number seventy-four of two thousand nineteen. Please read the resolution.
Resolution seventy-four, two thousand nineteen, a resolution authorizing the city enter into a contract with McNeil Farms and Excavating LLC for rehabilitating the Bridgewater Culvert in the city and for other purposes. Whereas the city of Benton published a request for bids for the rehabilitation of the Bridgewater Culvert in the city. And whereas after review of the bids, it's been determined that the contract should be awarded to McNeil Farms and Excavating LLC, which was the lowest acceptable bid. And whereas the city wishes to enter into an agreement with McNeil Farms and Excavating LLC to rehabilitate the Bridgewater Culvert in the sum, in the city for the sum of thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars. Now therefore be resolved by city council of the city of Benton, Arkansas. Section one, mayor and city clerk hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the city of Benton a contract with McNeil Farms and Excavating LLC to rehabilitate the Bridgewater Culvert in the city and to pay the agreed-upon compensation when due.
All right, any comments from the public? Comments from the council? Okay, resolution number seventy-four, take a vote, please.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Jed Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
All right, resolution number seventy-four, two thousand nineteen has duly passed. Anything else, councilmember Hamm?
No, Mr. Mayor, nothing else at this time.
All right, thank you. Uh, councilmember Donner, do you have anything from Health and Safety Committee?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I have ordinance number seventy-nine of two thousand nineteen that I'd like to have read on the first reading, please.
We have a motion and a second for the first reading of ordinance number seventy-nine of two thousand nineteen. Please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number seventy-nine of two thousand nineteen, an ordinance amending and restating the wage scale for employees in the city of Benton Fire Department. Amending ordinances ten of two thousand fourteen and seventy-one of two thousand eleven declaring emergency and for other purposes. Whereas the city of Benton in order to remain competitive in the job market desires to adopt a revised salary scale reflecting wage increases for employees within the fire department, which is attached here to is exhibit one, now therefore be ordained by the city council of the city of Benton, Arkansas. Uh, section one, the city of Benton does hereby adopt the attached pay range scale as set forth in exhibit one of this ordinance. These pay ranges shall constitute the salary paid ranges for the employees within the fire department. Section two, this ordinance shall be effective as of November the first, two thousand nineteen. Ordinances ten of two thousand fourteen and seventy-one of two thousand eleven are hereby amended as of that date to conform to the pay ranges stated in exhibit one. All other ordinances in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent of the conflict, but not otherwise. Any employee who is below the minimum for his or her job classification shall be increased to the minimum as of the effective date of this ordinance. Section three, if any provision of this ordinance or the application thereof to any person or circumstances held invalid, such invalidity shall not affect the other provisions or applications. And to this end, the provisions of this ordinance are hereby declared to be severable. Section four, there is immediate need to amend and revise and restate the employee wage scale for the city of Benton Fire Department. Therefore, emergency exists and this ordinance is necessary for the preservation of public peace, health, and safety. Subject to the effective date stated herein, it shall be in full force and effective me from and after its passage in approval.
All right, do we have any comments from the public? Come, come on up front, state your name, please. Don't be so shy.
Don't be so shy. Stuart Do, firefighter, Benton Fire Department. We would like to thank you for, for taking this into consideration. This just kind of gets our, our scale and how we, our department has grown. We're a younger department and how we have chose to promote people. You know, people are no longer in their positions for the amount of time that they used to be in this scale and it's what this is doing. It's a, it's a base of a one percent increase, but it's more of an adjustment to the scale to give us kind of a, a easier way and a smarter way to move people forward. So I just kind of thank you for taking this into consideration. We appreciate it.
All right, thank you. All right, comments from the council? All right. Hearing none, you want to take a vote?
No.
I'm waiting. Okay, now, I'd like to suspend the rule for second, third reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for the second, third reading.
We don't have.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Jed Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
All right, councilmember Donner.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have the second and third reading of ordinance seventy-nine of two thousand nineteen by title only.
Second.
We have a, a motion and a second for the second, third reading of ordinance number seventy-nine, two thousand nineteen by title only.
Ordinance number seventy-nine of two thousand nineteen, ordinance amending and restating the wage scale for employees in the city of Benton Fire Department, amending ordinance ten of two thousand fourteen and seventy-one of two thousand eleven declaring emergency and for other purposes.
All right, comments from the public? Comments from the council? Hearing none, please take a vote.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Jed Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Br, Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
All right, councilmember Donner, anything else?
Yes, sir, I'd like to pass, uh, the emergency clause, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass the emergency clause for ordinance number seventy-nine, two thousand nineteen. Please take a vote.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Jed Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
All right, ordinance number seventy-nine, two thousand nineteen has duly passed. Councilmember Donner, do you have anything else?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I have resolution number seventy-five of two thousand nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the reading of resolution number seventy-five of two thousand nineteen.
Resolution seventy-five of two thousand nineteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor into agreement with MetLife providing long-term, long-term disability benefits and life insurance for certain current and past city employees. Whereas the city council has determined that the city should modify certain benefits whereas are presently being provided for, for certain current and former employees of the city. And whereas has been determined that the product provided by MetLife is less expensive and offers a better product than the current city policies providing essentially the same type of coverage now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Benton, Arkansas. Section one, the mayor and city clerk hereby authorized to enter into a contract with MetLife providing certain current and former employees with coverage for long-term disability and life insurance. Copies of the two policies are attached hereto is exhibit one and two respectively.
All right, comments from the public? Comments from the council? Hearing none, please take a vote.
Jed Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
All right, resolution number seventy-five, two thousand nineteen has duly passed. Councilmember Donner, do you have anything else?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor, that's all. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We hear from the Parks Committee. Councilmember Hart, do you have anything?
Yes, sir, Mayor, I have three resolutions. First one, I'd like to make a motion that we accept resolution seventy-six of two thousand nineteen, please.
We have a motion and a second to accept resolution seventy-six of two thousand nineteen. Please read the resolution.
Resolution seventy-six, two thousand nineteen, a resolution authorizing the city, city to enter into a contract with Fence World, Inc. for constructing fencing at Bernard Holland Park and for other purposes. Whereas the city of Benton published a request for bids for the construction of fencing at Bernard Holland Park. And whereas after review of the bids, it's been determined that the contract should be awarded to Fence World, Inc., which is the lowest acceptable bid. And whereas the city wishes to enter into an agreement with Fence World, Inc. to construct fencing at Bernard Holland Park for the sum of one hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. Now therefore be resolved by city council of the city of Benton, Arkansas, section one, the mayor and city clerk hereby authorized to execute on behalf, behalf of the city of Benton a contract with Fence World, Inc. to construct fencing at Bernard Holland Park and to pay the agreed-upon compensation when due.
All right, any comments from the public? Comments from the council? Hearing none, please take a vote.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.